Good evening. If everybody could have a seat, we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, and welcome to the January 18th, 2012 work session. The work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken during work sessions. Tonight, there are two items on our agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk, which are these yellow comment cards right up here if you haven't filled one out yet. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes for agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. Do we have, the city clerk, do we have any public comment for items number one?
Yes, sir, we do. We have two, and one in the audience that will be read into the record in a moment.
Okay.
And our first item is discussion of project overview of Milton Park's comprehensive master plan, trails update master plan, and Birmingham Park master plan. Mr. John Rebar.
Do we want to look at public comment? Yeah, let's do the two public comments.
Our first public comment comes from Katie Reeves.
And I also want to take this opportunity to introduce Katie Reeves from the school board, and I certainly appreciate you being here, so thank you very much.
I'm not used to being on this side. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I really appreciate it. Katie Reeves, I'm with Fulton County Board of Education, certainly not here to tell you guys what to do, but just to share a little bit of feedback from my perspective. This is my 14th year on the board, and it's my 23rd year living in North Fulton. And so I've raised three children in this area and waited in long lines and got there very early to sign my children up for various sports, hoping they would become athletic, but alas, it was not to be. But they're grown now, and they all had great experiences belonging to teams. The one thing that we know, the Fulton County Board of Education knows it and supports it, and parents know it, and education experts know it, is that we know that our children will do well if they're connected. And sports are one of the things that we connect with. I mean, we on the board really, really support that. That's why we built schools that have so many facilities there, so that we can have extracurricular activities for our students to be connected to their community, and it's so important. Here's the rub. Many years ago, about 170 years ago when I was in high school, soccer wasn't even popular. Now we have ninth JV and varsity, boys and girls soccer teams. Lacrosse came along. We have teams for all of those in lacrosse. And the thing that I've heard, I've gotten a lot of calls from in the last five years, believe it or not, would be, there's more sports coming down the pipe because parents want their kids connected. And I will tell you as the person on the receiving end of the phone calls, there's just not enough space. I made a motion a few years ago on the Fulton County Board of Education to change our education specifications to be from one practice field to two practice fields. It wasn't supported. Not all parts of the county.
Two minutes are up.
Darn it. You know what? Just think about it. It's really tough, you guys. There's never enough space, and when we add new schools, we add new teams. It seems like, oh, you're adding new facilities, but really, we're just, we are adding additional strain on the existing facilities, and I just ask you to consider that. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for being here.
Our next speaker is Scott Stokowski.
I promise I only brought short notes. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Scott Stahuski, and I live at 3154 Chippingwood Court in Cricket Creek. Tonight, I come before you to speak in my role as the president of the Hopewell Youth Association. I am joined by a couple fellow board members in the audience, and I ask them just to stand and be recognized. Jeff Fester, my vice president, and Joe Kozak. Hopewell, as you know, and the city of Milton has a very strong working relationship that has grown from a humble start back in 2008. And this coming Saturday, we enter our eighth season of baseball at Bell Memorial Park under our agreement. You'll hear many facts, figures, and comments as the park's plans progress, so let me give you a couple right now. As a matter of reference, our spring season this year will have 639 players on 58 teams playing on your four fields. On field four alone, for those of you who've been in the park, we'll have 18 teams that play baseball every week. Almost four teams will practice every weeknight, Monday through Friday, and then on Saturday, there'll be nine games starting at 8:30 in the morning and ending after 8 o'clock at night. For comparison's sake, in Alpharetta, their program has 642 kids on 14 fields. We were 639 on four. Some experts suggest that each team should have, or that each field should have 10 teams per field, which means that we need at least an additional two fields in the city of Milton to satisfy the current demand for baseball alone. We have watched and participated in the ongoing development of the park's plans, especially for Birmingham Park, and we're appreciative and supportive of the efforts of you all and staff to expand the recreational fields and programs for the citizens of our city. We encourage you to support the development of additional fields in this city in all shapes, diamonds and rectangles, and to balance the loud voices of a few with the needs of many. Thanks for your attention.
Our next speaker is Dennis Covington.
Hello. My name's Dennis Covington. I have lived in, on Fremontville Road for 36 of my 41 years, and have had horses that entire time, and I'm very fortunate and blessed to live in a community where that's an option. I've also coached youth football for the past five years, and last year, I was the sixth grade head coach for the Cambridge High feeder team, and served on the Alpharetta Youth Football Board for the past three years as well. One of the challenges that we're running up with is with the explosion of lacrosse, with soccer and football, we're starting to run into capacity constraints. At Alpharetta Youth Football for the last few years and working with the city there, we were starting to run into where they wanted to cap the number of players that could play. And I know from working on that board that the city of Alpharetta residents would be given first rights to use Alpharetta Youth Football Association before our residents in Milton would be able to use that field. So my concern is that we don't have enough rectangle fields in this area, and that would be where I would like to see the city council and the planning commission work toward making sure that we have enough rectangle fields to meet the growing demands of this area when it comes to lacrosse, soccer, and football. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Winsness.
Hello. My name is David Winsness. I live here in Milton. It's my seventh year here. I'm the president of the Eagle Sticks Club. It's a girls' lacrosse program. We have 200 members in our lacrosse program. In the spring, about half of our members play for Alpharetta Parks and Rec, where they pay a 75% premium to play in that league. The other half of our members play in backyards and community neighborhoods as we have no space. So, and then we have a fall program where, again, we don't use any city parks or city of Alpharetta fields. So we have 200 members without any use of any fields. We beg, borrow, and make deals with Newtown. We pay exorbitant fees, and we'd like to see more fields allocated towards sports programs in our area, specifically girls' lacrosse. Our program, like I said, has 200 athletes today. We could easily go to 400 or 500 members. We just are constrained by space. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all the public comment.
Okay.
Gail just grabbed a public comment card. Do you want to speak and then you can fill it out? If you're okay with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you. My name is Gail Battersby, and I'm the exec of the Ed Isaacson Alpharetta YMCA. And I just came to speak to you because we do serve your residents here at our Y. We've had the opportunity to do that, but recently, we do not have enough field space. And with that, your residents are calling us to share with us that they have to go all the way to Webb Ridge or Haynesbridge Field. And with that, we know what traffic we use to get over here and what that's like as a parent coming home after a busy day and then having to go ahead and fight traffic to go so far away. So as you look at what you need to do for your city, please understand, there is a need to have the rectangles in your own backyard so that your citizens don't have to drive so far and that on top of a stressful day already, that they don't have to try to fight the traffic to go ahead and go to Webb Ridge School. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Gail. Okay, is that the public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay, the city clerk would please sound the first item.
Our first item is discussion of project overview of Milton Park's comprehensive master plan, trails update master plan, and the Birmingham Park master plan. Mr. John Rebar.
Mayor and city council, tonight, we're going to be presenting to you an overview of the three master plans we're working on. As the clerk sounded, we're working on a comprehensive plan, which is a 20-year view of what your park system could or should look like from now 20 years out. And it will be, it's a living document, and it will get updates within those 20 years. We're also updating the Birmingham Park master plan that was completed by Fulton County, and then the Milton Trails, we're giving that an update as well. In a few minutes, we'll be bringing up the consultants from Moreland Altobelli, Chris Kingsbury and David Yurtin. They're going to be giving a presentation and taking you through the process. We started this process about 75 days ago, when we started off with kickoff meeting with staff. We've done focus group meetings, and we've done a series of public workshops, as well as has a website that has everything that you need to know right on one stop and an email address to give the public a chance to participate if they can't make a meeting. So we've had, we have a huge success with our public input. What we're looking today is we want to bring you up to date on what we've done in those 75 days and get some direction if we need redirection from you on where to go so we don't bring you a product in March that is, we got off track. We're following a typical scope for a master plan, and that is looking 20 years out and saying, what do you need? What do you have? What do you need? What do we project you're going to need between now and 20 years? That includes some big things like land acquisition. Land acquisition may not be something that we, that council or the city is feasible in 10, 20 years. We may want to prioritize that less. There's some of the things that we may need to hear from you today. You may just give us a thumbs up to keep going on the track that we're on. But I'm going to stop there and give, bring up, is Chris going up first? Bring up Chris Kingsbury to, he's got a PowerPoint, and he can present to you where we're at, and then.
Good evening, thanks. I'm Chris Kingsbury with Moreland Altobelli, and as John said, David Yurtin's our associate. It's great to be here. This is a very interesting city to work with. I've been doing this for over 30 years. I think he's almost as old as I am. And you guys are brand new. You're just out of the box. The opportunity nationwide for consultants to work with an experiment, for a city to inform themselves out of an established county, it's probably a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So there's a lot of unique things that we've been excited to be involved with. And as John said, we've had a series of meetings, and first slide is, we're there. We're there. It didn't change. Change here, we didn't change up there. You can make a change. As John said, we've consolidated the three plans into one document, and that's where we're headed. So you guys are, yeah, all right, you can draw the project for me. He's my technical guy. And it's, because when you're originally asked for the RFPs, there is the three different components. What do you do with the citywide master plan? You're a new city, you need a plan. As John said, it's a 20-year timeframe. Birmingham Park is something you inherited from Fulton County. It had a lot of interest. There is a master plan that was done by the county before y'all recreated. It's a great resource, a great asset. They don't make any more new properties, so it's a, you're lucky to have it in some ways. And then trails update, how do you connect communities? How do you connect facilities? That's really, many of y'all came to some of our public meetings, and one of the things in my career we've noticed, trails were always considered a separate element. But when we do recreation surveys, we talk to people, many people, their recreation outlet now as we get older are using sidewalks, using off-road trails, using trails and parks. That's become a recreational use in and of itself, and it also, in certain settings, has the ability to be another mode of transportation. So trails are a hot topic right now with gasoline prices creeping back up, and you guys have other planning projects underway, the LCI study, the transfer development rights with the Crab Apple overlay, and trying to vision how Milton is going to transform itself from where it is now to where you might be in 15 or 20 years. And so trails will be an integral part of that, both as a mode of transportation for connectivity and as a recreational outlet. Very briefly, I'll tell this story. We do a lot of work with the PATH Foundation. And they had their 20th anniversary, and Ann McBrayer and the folks, their executive director, they came close to getting 200 miles of trails built in 20 years. Anecdotally, they've never studied it scientifically, but the vast majority of the people that walk or ride on a PATH-sponsored trail, be it the Silver Common or the Trolley Trail in Stone Mountain, or the Freedom Parkway Trail, probably live within a half mile or a mile or less of that facility, walked to it, used it for a mile, maybe a half mile out and a half mile back, and went home. So it's a part of the fabric of their daily life in their neighborhood, and then a very small portion of them, literally millions of people use the facilities in and around Atlanta, use it for longer trips. And some folks may actually use it. I live a mile from the farmer's market in the cab in Avenue Estates. I will, from time to time, my wife and I will come on the bicycle, ride a half mile, buy something small, and bring it home. Majority of the time, we're in a car, schlepping out a grocery cart full of stuff. But it is an option, and as we move forward with all these plans, that's a key thing to keep in mind. We're looking at a short-term, a midterm, a long-term horizon, and what your various options are for things you want, things you need, things you can afford. And I guess I'll turn it over to David, let him give you a little recap of where we've been, where we're headed, and then we're here for questions.
Thanks. Thank you. Yeah, that's good. I think it's fitting that we have pain management right after this, don't you think? Anyways, I'm going to briefly run you through the process, where we're at in terms of this plan. And as John said, it's been 75 days. It doesn't seem that long. We have gone through a pretty lengthy public involvement process and went through our first two sets of public meetings plus focus groups, so this really is our third workshop in the process. And just to let you know, the reason that these three studies were combined, I think, was for efficiency. So there have been a number of studies that have been done in the past, and I've got those listed on the PowerPoint so you can see them. Parks Recreation Assessment Plan, Pattern Book for Parks Recreation Facilities, all done in 2009. The Crossroads Plan, which is the TDR study, Form Based Code, and the Comprehensive Plan. So there's a number of studies that were done. When you see Project One, that's the comprehensive park and recreation master plan. Now, originally, the three separate entities were going to be the master plan, the trails, Birmingham Park. Now, the all-encompassing parks master plan, the comprehensive plan, Project One, really includes or encompasses the trails plan and Birmingham Park, so there's some efficiency in bringing those together. Project Two is a trails update, and I think Chris touched on that a bit. That was done by George Attack, that study, and it was done in, I believe, 2007. Very complex study. A lot of work went into that plan, and again, our job is to glean out of that plan what's relevant and what we think can be implemented. There wasn't a real accurate phasing plan into that plan, so I think what we'll do is we'll provide you some real-life implementation data so that we can logically go through it, plus a number of things have changed since 2007. The LCI, for example, in the Deerfield area, has a trail component in it that may have not been included in the original study, and the same with the Crab Apple neighborhood. And Project Three is Birmingham Park. Birmingham Park was originally a Fulton County park, as you know, and it went through a lengthy process too in terms of how it was master planned and in a public venue. Now, that plan was originally designed, if you look at the Fulton County master plan, as a regional park. Now it's a Milton park. So the aspects of that park that were important to, as a regional park, aren't necessarily important as a community park or a park for the city of Milton. So one of our workshops dealt with that specifically. And part of that too is the image of the park and what does Birmingham Park look like? So it's the one aspect of the master plan, or we can get into some detail in terms of the master plan, what things are going to look like ultimately. Let's see if I do that right. Yes. And again, Workshop One was an interactive charrette. I don't know if we had some of the council people come to our meetings, and that was really appreciate that kind of input. They were very well attended. The first workshop was November 29th and 30th, and that was for the master plan. The first evening was to talk about the comprehensive master plan. The second evening was to talk about the trails update specifically. Workshop Two was the 14th and 15th of December, and that was dedicated entirely to the Birmingham Park project. And again, that was a two-day meeting, and here we are, Workshop Three, with the city Now, the focus group meetings preceded all of that, and we met with all the groups that you see listed, Parks Recreation, Hopewell Youth. I don't have to list them all, you can read them off the screen, but it was a pretty comprehensive list. Took us two days of meetings to get through all these folks, the 17th and 22nd of November. So they gave us some very good input in terms of what their vision was for the Parks and Recreation master plan. And the reason we wanted to do that, and that is relevant, is these are folks that are down in the trenches every day, working in a parks scenario or a parks system, and they do have input. For example, public safety, you just ran out of the room, but public safety in terms of security. What aspects of the park master plan related to security? So there's little tiny bits and pieces that we need to address, and some of that came out of the focus group meetings. And what are the critical issues? The big question is, how do you deal with a 20-year timeline and a timeframe for park master plan? Well, how do you serve the population equal? You've got, in terms of how Milton is structured, you have Crab Apple down in the southwest corner, Deerfield in the southeast corner, and fully two-thirds of Milton is low-density residential to the north. So there's a, it has a little bit of an odd sort of feel to it in terms of how it's laid out, and there are going to be rapid changes in demographics, and we'll get into that a little bit later. And one of the things we brought out in the public meetings is, tell us what your wants are and tell us what your needs are. There's things that you want. Everybody has things that they want, but what do you really need? And those are really based on national standards and based on real-life examples, you know, the folks that spoke this evening in terms of active recreation. Things need to be there in order for you to function in terms of park and recreation. And how do you shoehorn all of this into a system that's already underway? So the questions that you see here were all questions that we brought up in the public meeting process, not the least of which is, how do you fund it, and what does it cost to serve the average family? Our philosophy of the approach is, how do you balance existing and future facilities planning? Specific standards versus national standards. What is specific to Milton in terms of your demographics, people that live here, and how does it relate to a national standard? Also, how do you make it unique to the city of Milton? There's no fence around the outs, there's lots of fences in Milton, but there's none around the outside of the city, so you don't really know if you're in or out. But there ought to be an image that's typical, that's very singular for the city of Milton, and then, you know, the horse is a logo and a question in the rural, agrarian kind of field. And how do you make it multi-layered in terms of size? Regional park, neighborhood park, small vest pocket parks, all serving different needs. And how do you anticipate all the demographic shifts? And there are different classifications, so we started talking about standards, active and passive recreation. You have to balance the two. Neighborhood pocket parks and civic and cultural facilities, and that is, the Hopewell Community Center, for example, would be considered a civic and cultural facility. There would be a need for more of those. Special sports facilities, some things that were talked about in the public meetings, something specific for a particular sport, like volleyball or tennis, that becomes a regional facility. And then greenways and trails. And the level of service requirements. Now, again, based on the population in 2010, which for Milton is 32,661, that population will jump by year 2030 to 51,900. So you're going to look at a huge increase in population despite the current recession. And what we fall back on, and what we rely on, is data. And the hard data is NRPA, National Park Standards, how much acreage is required per population? What kind of facilities are required per population? Regardless of public input, these are real numbers that need to be addressed over a long period of time. So we try to make sure that we get those national standards into the master plan immediately. And what park facilities, based on those national standards, what park facilities do you need for the future? Well, if you look at the cold, hard facts, one Milton city park at 200 acres or plus, which is Birmingham Park, one for the city up until year 2030. Community parks, you probably need two to three more based on the demographic. Neighborhood parks, and that's currently underway and is part of the comprehensive plan, those are the smaller five to 10-acre parks. Seven to 10 required. Pocket parks, 12 to 15. Community centers, three to five, and special sports facilities as determined. So you can see that these numbers are going to jump over time. What you have now is not adequate to serve the population, obviously, in 2030. And what is the citing criteria? Service area planning, what that means is you've got a population that's not exactly equally located throughout your city, so where the population is concentrated, that's where you need to have your services. You don't want them too far from your population centers. And locations, facilities statistics for needs for each new park, how do you deal with the older parks that are in need of repair, and how do you expand those existing parks as well? And what are your special facilities needs? A lot of things have changed in the past five or six years since Milton was established. Trailheads, neighborhood and commercial sites need to be addressed as well, and of course, the big one, open space and conservation. So when we started talking about the park system, obviously, there is going to be need for additional park facilities, either in acreage or in programming. So you can deal with some of that with programming, and it's not really a cheat, but programming can be spread to the school system, for example. If you don't have a park that has a soccer field, but a school, could be a shared facility, or you go outside of Milton. We refer to North Park as the 400-pound gorilla in the room, wholly and solely owned by the city of Alpharetta, but a lot of folks in Milton use that park simply because locationally, logistically, it's in the right place. So we started also talking about, if there were the opportunity for acquisition in the future, where would it be? And so we came up with a map, and it outlined a few areas, and that's what you see in front of you. Now, the question remains, can the city of Milton, can the city of Milton, with the facilities that are going to be needed in 2030, be accommodated with the existing acreage that you have? And that's the puzzle we're trying to solve right now. Obviously, the Birmingham Park facility, 205 acres, can solve a number of those problems, and there's a lot of pressure on that park for development in terms of, well, how does it look and how does it feel? Well, the quick answer on that is, it has the acreage to accommodate a good deal. So in this, what you see here, the next step slide, is the master plan documented itself, how it will be formatted. Context, local and regional context, recent studies and plans, and so all the old studies and all the previous studies that have been done are part of the context. And probably the most important aspect of the master plan are park types and level of service standards. Number one, NRPA standard requirements. That's the number one aspect of the master plan. We use in order to determine what your facility needs, programming needs are going to be, based on hard numbers, population, and demographics. The Shapiro Study that was done, which is a needs assessment that was done, gives us a very clear idea of what isn't, what's needed in terms of real-life programming and real-life facilities. These are people in your community that came back and said, this is what we want. This is what we think we need. And then, of course, the third part of that is the public involvement component. All these three aspects need to be balanced, but the important one, I think, is the NRPA standards. That's what we need to go by. The existing parks inventory, what do you have now? Birmingham Park, Bell Memorial, Providence, and then some other smaller parks. That's what we've got right now, plus the trail system. And park and recreation program requirements, which goes beyond facilities. Programming is one of those things where it's, there's two aspects to the park program there, to the parks' master plan. There's programs and there's facilities. Programs fit within the facilities, but they also can go outside the facilities. In other words, you can satisfy all your programming needs if you go outside the boundary of Milton or you use shared facilities. And of course, then the master plan itself, which will be three components, the comprehensive park and master plan, which is the all-encompassing document, and then fitting within that, the trail plan and all- trail plan and also the trail update. And of course, then there'll be implementation strategies with that, how you phase it over time, what gets built first, what's the critical path for implementing the parks and recreation program? And that concludes our presentation.
At this point, if we're opening it up, if there's any questions from council, I'll go to our staff or Montalbeli.
We've thrown a lot at you, and I think, feel free to contact us directly or go through John. We've gotten some feedback from some of the stakeholders that come to the meetings, a number of y'all that come to the meetings and talk to us at the various public events we've had, Mr. Thurman, Mr. Large, Mr. Cunst came before they even were sworn in, and Mr. Lutz has been a steady attendee. So, we're working if y'all were available. So, if we've thrown a lot at you tonight and something occurs to you later, email us, call us, we're at your disposal.
Bill?
On one of your slides, you had the parks' needs, the main park, pocket parks, and all of the others. And you stated that Birmingham Park was 200 acres. Now, is the 200 acres the need or just that size area? Now, the effective use of Birmingham Park is probably, would you say, 60%?
Yeah, I think you've got a good point. The slide, can you go back to that slide or we're closing on? That's sort of the hierarchy of types of facilities. So, in a gross fashion, the area of Birmingham, given your population, meets what you define as the area of you would need for a regional park. Now, how you can effectively utilize that, you've probably got a 50, 50, 60, 40, maybe 70, 30 split when you get into the fine design, because of topography and some other issues, what is passive and natural versus what might be more intensely developed.
And to be clear, then, the, when we were doing, going through the public meeting process, and I want to be very clear about this, as we were going through the process, we had talked about what the level of service requirements are going to be for the park and recreation system for the city of Milton, which is, it was, you know, more stuff than fit. And the, try not to step on my toes here too badly, but Birmingham Park became sort of a, we wanted one whole meeting, one whole workshop dedicated just to Birmingham Park, because we know that Birmingham Park can accommodate a good deal of the needs for the city of Milton for parks and recreation facilities in lieu of acquisition. If acquisition is taken out of that mix and becomes too difficult or unreasonable or not financially feasible, then Milton needs to look at Birmingham Park as a more intensely developed park than it normally would be if you had the option for acquisition or expansion of other parks. So, there is a balance in there somewhere, and I guess the wise way to do it, phase Birmingham Park in a way that if acquisition becomes something you can do in the future, you know, don't get too far ahead, but preserve enough of Birmingham Park so that it can be expanded later.
And I would just add quickly to that, couple of slides touched on it. Acquisition is obviously a big issue because of the cost, but there's another cost that the master plan looks at, and that's John's department and how you pay to operate the facilities you have, or how you pay to structure the fees to have other people provide those services. So, going forward over that 20-year horizon, short, midterm, long-term, there's the cost component of, and acquisition is certainly a component. Capital improvement of either new or existing facilities is a second component, and then what's it going to cost to operate that going forward and maintain it becomes a third component.
Well, I would say that slide, when it first showed, it was pretty eye-opening as far as the ultimate requirements of land and property that we would need.
I have a question. Obviously, there'd be a cost to building these parks and these trails, but is there, has there ever been a study done among any of these cities as far as return on investment? As far as property values, as well as, you know, the demand for housing in those areas where there are parks, things of that nature? I didn't see anything like it on the presentation. I wasn't sure if you might know.
Well, you're asking, does it add value?
Well, I know it does, but it wasn't an numerical equation of that, if there is a number that could be put to that.
And it's a difficult thing to solve, and you can go, the trick is to find cities that are similar to Milton, and then you're comparing apples to apples. There is an economic development component to parks and recreation development, obviously. As you develop a park system, it draws people and it increases values of homes and so forth. I think there is a real value increase when you have a good park and recreation system, but I'm not sure what that number would be, and it's probably something that would be included in our master plan, the final version of it. But that's a pretty difficult thing to compare from one city to another, especially the unique aspect of, uniqueness of Milton is very clear. So, we can do it, and it does add value, just as much.
Chris?
A couple of questions. First, are you going to give us at some point in time some information concerning what the standards should be for Milton before we actually start drawing things out based on the National Parks?
Yes.
Standards?
Yeah, and where we, just to be clear, too, we're at about 30% right now.
Okay.
So, we've got some preliminary numbers. So, we know, based on your demographic right now, what's required. Currently, we're in a recession, so things are going to slow down a bit in terms of population increase and so forth. But yeah, there will be real hard numbers, and we will have those into the plan that are exactly what is required based on population, exactly what's required based on demographic stratag.
Okay, I mean, because there are certain things that we may not need as many of as the standards require, just because some of the subdivisions may have their own tennis courts and things like that. So, I want to make sure that we don't just go strictly based on standards where, you know, Milton is unique.
No, that's correct. And part of it, too, is you, part of the inventory is getting into these private develop, private areas, trying to figure out what's out there. And, you know, private facilities that has tennis courts and has a playground, a lot of them do have little mini parks, that sort of thing. Obviously, you don't want to replicate that right outside the boundary of this development where it's not useful. So, part of the master planning process is to identify private facilities and also public facilities. So, the private facilities then kind of offset the public need. And when you have a certain demographic, like Milton does and certain parts of Milton at least, obviously, your need for those public facilities is less.
And number two, we've already received an email, I guess, from the Milton Horse Council, saying that they support Plan A. Are there plans already out there that are being discussed? Or, because like I said, we've already got an email saying that they support a jig of the plan.
I guess the best way, John told us about that email. The workshop that generated the two sketches we developed, was, they were working sketches. We had left the right side of the room. So, it's sort of like an exercise in democracy. For some reason, one group was a little more oriented toward horse interests than the other. But if you look at the A and B sketches, because we had two sketches that were produced, because Dave and I both ran the tables, so to speak, all of them had very similar elements. So, all of them, both plans had a blend of open space and a blend of active recreation. One may have shaded more toward the other than, or perceived to be more open space than active space.
And there's another part to that. When we did the presentation at the Birmingham Park, can't hear me, sorry. When we did the Birmingham Park workshop, it's on public record, and I very clearly stated, this is really based on a number of factors. Birmingham Park can't be, can't be viewed as in isolation. It's viewed in combination with the parks system, and we made that very clear. So, we were doing all those little sketches and plans, it was Birmingham Park, and at the end, I said, you know, this is really, we both-
One component.
One component based on acquisition. If acquisition is part of the plan and there's more property available, then Birmingham Park can become 100% passive, for example. That's not, but that's not reasonable, considering that the acquisition component is an unknown. So, if you put that into the mix and acquisition is taken out of the equation, then that workshop would have taken on a little bit different tenor. So, it may have put more active recreation in Plan A, the accepted plan, but, and as Chris said, that Plan A also had active recreation in as well. So, it was-
But those plans are not working plans that we're working with right now. They do not, they do not take into account any of the national-
That is correct.
-park standards or the surveys that were done previously.
Yep.
Sent out, okay.
They were done in the bubble of that-
They capture the input we got from those folks at the meeting.
But just to clarify, that was an exercise.
Correct.
That's not a plan that was-
Like you said.
But I just want to make sure we understood what it was, because like I said, we've already received a-
Bubbles.
Yeah.
Bubble diagrams. I got to tell you this little story. Some of y'all know the firm, Morton Altabelli, people, I think Tom Morton, DOT commissioner, and they say, well, how'd you guys get involved with parks? And when the firm started, the first contract we had was Gwinnett County. And I tell this story at the workshops wherever we go, our first contract with Gwinnett County in the early 80s was a bond sale to pave dirt roads. There were 340 miles of dirt roads in Gwinnett County that needed to be paved. The second contract we got was with Manuel Malu from DeKalb County, and finally, after three attempts, Jim Cone sold $66 million worth of bonds, $33 million for libraries, $33 million for parks. And Tom asked me the other day, well, how's the Milton study going? And I said, well, it's unique. It's very interesting. A lot of the standards that Dave and I talk about have been developed over years of study nationwide, countywide, citywide, what people need, what people want. And if you had a perfect slate, you could start from scratch and build a city, what's the online game, Farm Bill, whatever that thing is, you'd have this mix of retail and this mix of housing and this mix of senior housing, and you'd have this many parks and you'd have them located here, and, oh gosh, a road system. And Tom got off on this little story, said, you know, in the 50s, when he started his career, we were still building the interstates. And so, as a national goal, we were trying to move a lot of people across a lot of distance, and hindsight, we stepped on a lot of toes, but we've got a system and it moves a lot of people. And right now, in transportation, we're trying to make do with what we have in a congested urban area. There's no more land in Atlanta, and we're not going to widen the interstates anymore. We're really not going to be able to widen our arterials. We're not going to be able to generate large open spaces for regional parks. That's why Birmingham is, I think, such a flashpoint for everybody, because it's a treasure, it's a resource. And a small city like Milton, it's the biggest, the biggest resource in your backyard, so it's of great concern. Well, yeah, a lot of it will remain passive and natural because of its development constraints. And when we met with John before the meeting, I reminded him, the two largest park programs in the metro area now are Cobb has a sales tax, Gwinnett just finished their sales tax. I think the combined value of both those programs over, the Gwinnett program finished up with just over $300 million in improvements. And the Cobb program is moving forward, 2012 splashed with about $77 million. The 25% of Gwinnett's money went to acquire property. They had a massive land acquisition to catch up to a population that grew from a quarter of a million people 20 years ago to by 2050 be over a million. Cobb is going to spend $70 million to renovate existing property. And property they bought with their last splash, they had a bond program to buy property. So, they have, 600-plus million people have bought all the property they envisioned ever having for the next 50 years, and they're simply going to manage it. So, you guys are at the beginning of a process that other people have been working on for decades. So, it's, as I said earlier, it's unique, challenging, and we're excited to see where the plan heads out, where it heads.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Lance.
Thank you. Birmingham, 200-some acres.
Two to five.
And what, about 60% of it is usable. So, that's really the only property that we have right now that lends itself to a lot of active field sizes in terms of rectangular and diamond fields.
Yeah, we think Providence will always remain a passive type situation. There's the potential to have some use on the old landfill with a joint use arrangement. I think you've followed that development. Other cities and counties have come to arrangements with the owners of those facilities to allow public use in a limited fashion. That may serve some of the field needs in future years, who knows? Smyrna did that with the closed landfill.
Right. Part of what you're doing, you mentioned this, are you doing an actual inventory of what private facilities there are within the city in terms of neighborhood and-
And that's a new model. In the last 10 years, it's been a metro-wide, Chris Thurman mentioned it, for tennis particularly, subdivisions and private associations have provided a lot of the demand that cities and counties used to have to build. Private sports facilities have become more common, and I think the economy, the economic model is there. In some situations, in a very high-level perspective, you can make the argument, if I pay money to send my kids to play at a private soccer, lacrosse, baseball, softball complex for four, eight years till they go to college, that's an investment I've made in that aspect of their life. When they're gone, I quit paying, and I'm out of that business. If, as a community, we invest in that, then you might have to, that burden is forever attached to a bond sale for a 20-year payback or some such, some such mechanism.
Are you also looking at, are you familiar with what's going on in Fairburn in terms of the Cal Ripken?
Yeah, that's a regional private facility that's-
Oh, public-private.
It's a partnership, that's right.
It's a partnership, right. And so, are you, are you looking at those types of opportunities?
It'll be discussed in the master plan. Whether or not that's an option here, I don't know.
Right.
But I think where you're headed is, does programming, and programming outside Alf, for example, into Alpharetta solve the problems with facilities? And the question is yes. The problem that came out of the public meetings was the cost of that. Citizens in Milton brought up the cost of utilizing North Park, for example, and that could be a sticking point, but if you don't have the, in the short term, programming for facilities can be put in other areas, schools, shared facilities, or outside the boundary of the city of Milton.
Last part.
Go ahead.
The, another part you're putting into your study is the O and M cost on what's being proposed in terms of what our future costs, you've touched on that, I saw Chris nodding his head on that in terms of the operation cost, because that, Gwinnett ran into a problem. They put a lot of their projects on hold for a while because they ran into such a revenue problem in terms of operating what they already had.
Twenty years ago, DeKalb had the same problem. We had libraries here, only open three days a week.
Mr. Large, just to be, to make the point even, even more fine, we do design parks, Chris and I, where you have four ballfields and one building in the center, and it's the watchtower. It's kind of like the prison thing where you can watch 360 degrees. The idea is, you can design these parks a little bit more smart so that you only have a few personalities, or you can design them so they're spread out and you have more difficulty. The density of those active recreation facilities is important because it lessens the amount of maintenance and operation costs that you have, so.
Bill?
They were coming around full circle again, but we've heard from four different folks here tonight, four separate interests in different types of facilities, in diamonds and rectangular fields. At the end of your study, do you foresee us having a priority list? Certainly, we don't want to go out and build 10 rugby fields when we have a demand here to serve 669 kids for baseball.
There's a prioritization. There's also a new phenomenon, y'all met, many counties, Gwinnett County, for instance, we just finished converting four existing facilities to artificial turf. And the advantage there is it accommodates, we haven't had rugby in Gwinnett yet, but certainly football practice, soccer, and lacrosse could all be accommodated, and band practice if there's a high school nearby. Those are four activities that are from sunrise to as late as the zoning allows. Keep the lights on, the fields are in constant use. You could never get that out of an old turf facility. So, that's the kind of thing the master plan will examine, maybe to prioritize the investment upfront, to have flexibility on programming later.
And part of that's infrastructure, too. There's things that you need to do. The critical path is sometimes an infrastructure piece, could be a pipe or a pulley underground you don't see. So, the critical path needs to follow all the different aspects of developing park systems. And when we do our implement- park systems. And when we do our implementation program, there's going to be, obviously, a logical phasing program to get to the end. And, again, over time, further you get down the line in the master plan, it gets a little bit fuzzier. So, we know what the targets are. And in the beginning, the first five to 10 years, that path would be very clear. The target's still there, but maybe things, priorities change 10 years from now.
I'd just, I'd like to add, too. I appreciate the hard work and presentation. I appreciate the comments, public comments we've had, both tonight. Also, we've all gotten lots of feedback. We've gotten survey results. But I'm just, I want to say, I'm excited for the opportunity we've got moving forward, with all of our existing land and possible acquisitions in the future. Birmingham Park, what a great canvas to work with. We can, you know, I think that can meet the needs. We know we need lots of fields and sports, but then we also, there's room for passive. I know we're an equestrian community with, you know, we have that image. We can turn that park into with a four-board fence, maybe some structures or whatnot, to give it an equestrian feel, and mix it all in. And I just, I think it's exciting that we can kind of step out and do something. I'm pretty sure you guys are going to have an award-winning, winning-
Appreciate that. We hope so.
-our system at-
It is an exciting project, too.
Yeah, we're excited. So, I want to thank you, and everybody else that's involved, with the committees and our citizens. So.
He used the word "equestrian," did he, man? It's on the city trucks, yeah.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you.
Appreciate it. That's your computer.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Is there any public comment on the next?
No, sir, there is not.
Okay. Well, then, City Clerk, please sound that out.
This item is update and discussion of the moratorium at issuing business licenses to new pain management clinics within the city of Milton. Mr. Ken Gerard.
I'm going to start this one, then Ken's going to chime in. I'm surprised nobody wants to stay in here. This agenda is really interesting. It, I want to bring you back to the second day of May 2011, when the council enacted a moratorium against pain management clinics, or otherwise referred to as pill mills. And we want to make sure that as we get to that May date in this next year, as that moratorium were to expire, we want to make sure that if we allow it to expire, that we are covered, to the extent that we want to be covered, as far as regulating those pill mills that may further illegal activity. And what we did, as a product of that, was to sit and kind of watch and see what the state was going to do to regulate pill mills, and to make the determination that what they did was effective enough, and went far enough that we are comfortable with it being the regulation for Milton, or conversely, if we're not. And that we want to put something in place, very much like what we did in December, where we chose to regulate pawn shops and gold-buying businesses, where we chose to regulate them further, whether or not this council is satisfied with what the state has done, or has some interest in regulating it further. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Ken. I won't make my recommendation yet as to what we do, but I think it'll become fairly apparent.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, everything Chris just said is accurate. In May, you adopted a moratorium with respect to pain management clinics or pill mills, based upon, I think, the city of Milton recognizing a concern that this was a sort of industry that we wanted to get out in front of, as you're doing, as Chris said. He did steal all of my thunder, with both precious metal institutions, as well as pawnbrokers. And the same thing here. You all try to act proactively, as opposed to reactively, and that's what you did as well here. One of the things in your moratorium that I hope is in your packet, if it's not, I've got it right here, was that you specifically forecast that the General Assembly was working on a Senate bill, Senate Bill 36, that we wanted to monitor and see what it did, and whether or not it, first of all, directly regulated these sort of clinics, whether it acted enough where we wouldn't have to, and what it did. Well, I've got Senate Bill 36, and I've read it. And I hope none of you have, but if you have, I'm sure that you slept well that night. But what it basically does, is sets up a computer database regulatory system, where with respect to Schedule 2, 3, 4, and 5 controlled substances, basically more of your narcotic-based prescriptions, there will at some point be a statewide database of these sorts of prescriptions being issued, whether they be original prescriptions or refills. And there will, I'm sure, be triggers built into the software, where if there's a certain amount of these prescribed, you'll know the doctor that's prescribing them, and the patient that's receiving them, and those sorts of things. And I'm sure that red flags will come up, and they'll be able to investigate both the recipient of those narcotics, as well as the issuing authority of those narcotics. The problem is, is that the kickoff language of the legislation provides that "subject to funds as may be appropriated by the General Assembly, or otherwise available for such purpose," which leads me to believe that, of course, this has to be funded before it's going to become effective. And then we have to ask ourselves, how long will actually making a statewide prescription regulatory database take to implement, once it is funded? When will it come online? And, of course, when will it be effective in the Milton, with respect to Milton, or with respect to the law enforcement branches of Milton? If you look in the statute, the only way law enforcement are going to have access to this information is by subpoena anyway. So, it's not like this information is going to be commonly available. And, of course, that may be a good thing, with respect to privacy concerns. That may be a good thing. I think the point that I want to leave you with, though, is that the state of Georgia has touched it, but I don't know that they've touched it in a manner that may address the concerns you had. First of all, we don't know when this is going to get off the ground. You know, maybe it's in the works right now. Maybe the General Assembly won't authorize it this year, appropriate funds for it. We just don't know. At least, I don't. And so, therefore, it sort of leaves us with an aggy question of, do we want to let this moratorium expire, which it does expire, as Chris said, in the end of April? One thing we could do, and of course, Chris said he would reserve his final judgment or final recommendation to you until the end of this presentation. But one thing we might want to think about is, is if you content yourself that Senate Bill 36 just doesn't go far enough. It's too tentative. It's too amorphous. We just don't know if it's going to address this issue. And it's a real issue. You may want to extend the moratorium, which we could do. I'd want a public hearing on it. We could extend the moratorium. And then you might want to, again, this is your call, but you might want to then direct myself, with Chris, and staff, community development staff, to work up a, not a moratorium, but an ordinance, a modification to our zoning code that would, in fact, either prevent, prohibit altogether, or in some way, very heavily regulate these sort of institutions in Milton. Again, I'd want to do that with another extension of the moratorium, to make sure nothing slips in while we're fooling with it. And then we would put that together and bring it back to you. Now, you have another option. The other option is, is to simply say, "Well, Ken, we appreciate it, but we think the city of, or the state of Georgia has touched it. They seem to be at least working toward implementing a solution that will hopefully provide safeguards, so these clinics don't gain footholds in Georgia. And we're happy to let the moratorium expire on May 4. And we'll take our chances." And I don't mean that to suggest that that's a risky move. I'm just saying, you may decide that, you know, sufficient resources are being expended by the state of Georgia to address this issue, and you don't want to spend any more on the city of Milton's end. And I would fully respect that as well. But those are your options. Let the moratorium expire and do nothing, or maybe think about extending the moratorium, and perhaps giving some direction for staff to bring back something.
First, I want to, also, we've got a couple of new council members here, too. Is everybody familiar with the type of facility that-
I was going to, being a new guy, I was going to ask.
Maybe Ken, just give a brief discussion of, or a brief description of-
And do we have those types of facilities?
We do not. We do not. And forgive me for getting ahead of myself, for those of you who weren't here when we discussed this back in May of 2011. First of all, maybe sometimes it's easier to talk about what we're not talking about. We're not talking about legitimate doctors' offices, or pharmacies, or the Kroger pharmacy, or thing of that nature. What we're talking about is what, in some areas of our country, is becoming sort of a rash of, they're under the guise of pain clinics, but what they are really doing is providing non-medical-based prescriptions, which is basically enabling another form of drug abuse, based upon not illegal drugs, but on, in fact, prescription lawful drugs. But the prescription process is being abused, to the point that it's no more than simply illicit or illegal activity. There are studies that have been done, and quite frankly, in your moratorium, we identified studies that were done in Florida, where the number of, I mean, what I call high-octane, but opiate and narcotic-based prescriptions is staggering, the number that have been issued. And the conclusions by at least the grand jury, I think it was in Broward County, are that the overwhelming majority of these were not medical necessity-based. No one in the council, or anybody else in this government, is interested in manipulating or affecting anybody's legitimate access to health care. That's not the point of this, and that's not what the grand jury found. We're concerned with institutions that are basically conducting the legal narcotic dispensing, and trying to shut those down, or at least preventing them from getting a toehold, and impacting adversely your citizens.
And, you know, in a simple way, you sometimes may see a facility pop up in a strip center, and it says "pain management," or whatever, basically where someone goes in and says, "Well, you know, my back hurts." Okay, well, here's your prescription to pay us a fee, and here's your prescription for, you know. So, that's a-
Out of curiosity, not that I've used it, but acupuncture, I know a lot of chiropractors, some chiropractors do acupuncture. Does it cover something like that?
No.
It's all drug-related.
It's all drug-related, and basically, these heavily controlled substances, the Schedule 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Yeah, and there's not, there's not any facilities in Milton, or I don't believe we've had any kind of, talk of any applications.
We have. The thing that started this was, just the watching of these facilities kind of start to come down I-75 out of northern Georgia, down from the Chattanooga area. We started to see a trend where they were popping up in that corridor. And, you know, when they get as close as Cherokee County, that's a neighbor, you know? So, that was what caused us to look at this in May, as things start to spread a little bit. You just don't want to, to the extent that you have the ability to control them from spreading in your community, that, you know, that's, I think, something we should, we should look to do.
Okay.
I mean, it looks like to me, the state of Georgia has determined there's a need, and they've got a plan in place. But just like a parks plan, until the plan's actually implemented, it really doesn't do you a whole lot of good.
Well said.
So, you know, I believe that we've got to at least extend the moratorium to see whether or not they get their plan implemented, because until they get it implemented, it's nothing but a great plan. So.
Yeah, the only good thing about the plan is says that the state is actively working towards a solution as where of the problem. Bill?
Do we have any sense, or have we talked to any of our local legislators, our state senators, where this is, this session's darker?
Well, forgive me, Chris. The Senate bill is adopted. Now, I think you're asking about the appropriation and the funding of it. What I could do, if the council would like, or Chris can do it, is we could call the Georgia Drug and Narcotic Agency, which is going to be the agency tasked with implementation. They, probably better than anybody else, is going to know whether they have a viable shot at getting funding for this wrapped into an appropriations bill this session.
And we're still in shrinking budgets. So, you know, this is an add-on in a shrinking year. And I don't want to forecast how the state's going to balance the budget. I'm sure they'll do a fine job. But just any time you start to add new stuff in shrinking years, you question if it has the ability to not be funded, and there really be no penalty for not funding it, other than it just doesn't kick in this year. We'll just have to watch that.
The session's going to be over before the end of April. So, we do have some time to see what the state's going to do. Are there any model ordinances out there that we could readily adopt, if the state doesn't move forward on this?
It's a great question, Councilwoman Bruski. I don't know. And that would be, that would be the first step, if we get the direction that that's what y'all would at least like us to begin to corral. We'll go out and find and see if anybody else has done it by way of an ordinance already.
Joe?
Yeah. Do we run into any kind of trouble extending the moratorium too many times? Is there something that we need to worry about in terms of that, as far as a legal foothold?
Yeah. No, I think you're asking, I don't think so. Again, that's why I would want to go ahead and have a public hearing. There is some case law that suggests that the public hearing would solve any of those legal technicalities. I think we're sitting pretty a little bit right now, because I'm not aware of any, any interest in Milton, and even one of these folks coming and speaking to community development, and talking about pulling a permit, or trying to get a business license. So, I think we're okay. This is sort of just better be safe than sorry moratorium.
I think we have a reason to extend it, if we choose to.
Very legitimate.
Because we're waiting on the state. We're not just open-ended extending the moratorium.
Well, the other question that I had, Ken, and I think we talked about this last year originally, but for the life of me, I can't remember what exactly we said. I mean, if we can identify the type of business that this is, in order to put some kind of constraints around them, and we know that it's not a regular pharmacy, we know that it's not a regular doctor's office, we know all these things that it's not, why aren't we just outlawing them altogether?
Well, I think, first of all, I think the moratorium has the practical effect of outlawing them altogether. But once I start putting in effect an ordinance that will have effect, basically permanent prohibitions, I just, I just want to make sure it's going to pass a constitutional muster.
Okay.
We answer your question?
No.
Well, I think, and I know Chris wants to follow up, but especially with staff and Ken, and also, Councilman Durman made a comment, and, you know, it seems to me, the smart thing for us to do is to extend the moratorium, and see what the state does, and see how that goes, and then bring it back up. And then, we can also ask, ask you, Ken, to, or our staff, to look at if there's any other model ordinances out there that, if anybody else has done, that we could take a look at.
And if the council's agreeable, in addition to extending the moratorium, and looking at some model ordinances, or perhaps staff will do that, I'll be happy to contact the Georgia Drugs and Narcotic Agency, and just maybe see if I can get some intel on them. They may say, "Look, this is a fast track. This is a priority, and we're already putting together the infrastructure." And that would be an important fact for you all to know, with respect to what you do. So, I'll bring that back to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Just for Matt and Lance, you know, in a work session, as we don't vote on anything, or make any formal actions, staff can get feedback of the direction we want to go. And then it comes back formally in a meeting, if we make a decision or something. So, this is supposed to work. We thank you guys for your presentation, and being here, and John, for all your work. We're excited. I think parks is one of the common threads that is near and dear to everybody's, everybody's heart here, and I'm a poet. There's no other comments or questions, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Don't enjoy Mayor's Day.